It's resolved that the Board of Education enter -- oh, sorry. Yep. Hold on. All right. We have set aside 10 minutes for a public comment at this time. If you'd like to make a comment, please approach the Board and state your name. Seeing that we have no one at this time, we're going to move to presentations. Our first presentation is opening of our school year and we'll start with our administrators and supervisors.
Okay. You want us to go here or back here?
Just stand. Everything else here we could just stood up.
Okay.
Wherever most comfortable.
What?
Wherever you're most comfortable.
I get to sit quickly, so. Good evening, everyone. This is Nicole O'Connell. She's one of my kindergarten teachers and she's actually doing an administrative internship with me this year. She started her admin work through MCLA this summer. So she's actually going to present on behalf of Beattie Town Elementary.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Welcome. Well, I'm for welcoming me. Our update for our BES school year. Been a fabulous first day, first few days. The school year's off to a great start. The Buildings and Grounds crew did an outstanding job preparing the building during the summer. A little warm. There were several room changes that took place throughout our building. So that we had a better layout of classrooms within the building. New tinted insulation along the windows and the entryway helped bring about a greater degree of sense of security by not allowing visitors to see in through the classrooms on the left and the office door on the right. It looks very professional, makes the entry look more inviting. Classroom teachers are enjoying, you know, we can check their hair when we're walking in, make sure because it's very mirrored. Several security strobes are installed in the building to help with an increased security during emergency situations. The kids have even noticed them, even the little ones have already started to notice them, even though we haven't even used them yet. So they're nice and visible there. They help ensure that all staff are aware of any emergency situations in the event that the new comm system is down or not working. New mats have been installed along the walls of the all-purpose room and prep for that this space will be used as a designated gymnasium with the upcoming capital project. Those are there for safety reasons. We have new glass backboards in the all-purpose room also for our PE classes. Staff returned to a new upgraded phone system. And I'll be the first to say it was a little learning curve, but we're working those kinks out and we appreciate a lot of the new features that are part of that new phone system. Staff returned excited to kick off the new year. Our first few superintendent's days were packed with icebreakers, challenges, meetings, and trainings. Staff from both of our elementary buildings, BES and CAGS, spent time together prepping for the upcoming year in BLT and discussing the new report card that we are going to roll out this November. Staff helped to welcome students back with positive messages. We rode chalk on the sidewalk chalk on the ground. We had balloons and bubbles for the first day. The culture team organized a school-wide picnic on Friday during lunchtime where students were ate outside. We had some lawn games, got to chat with each other on Friday. The parking lot's still under construction. Parents and staff have been very patient as we've made adjustments to the beginning of the day, end of the day with pickup drop-off. A new drop-off procedure was put in place and came together very well. We've connected with the high school, some of our high school honor society students during their study halls. They were able to come and help and assist in the crosswalk with a lot of the kids that were being dropped off. Thank you to Mr. Chapman, Mr. Pizai for helping make that happen. The new parking lot's ready, he's already shaping up nicely for the new traffic patterns. I think people are already starting just being out there to see that the flow is already starting to be a little bit more fluid. And times being spent this week, we started with pride expectation assemblies and, you know, students are starting to get into their routine very quickly. Our benchmark assessments have begun and we are looking forward to a great year at BES. That's it for BES. Woo-hoo!
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I actually feel more comfortable with a microphone. My staff has requested that my voice is always amplified for future meetings. I just don't have that voice like Carrie's. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We can hear you now.
So, much like BES, we're off to a great start. Our classrooms were all set up and ready to go well before the first day of school opened. Buildings and Grounds did a wonderful job preparing the school for the opening day. We also had some room changes and we also had summer school in our building this summer. So our custodians really had to work hard the last week or so. It seemed like it was crunch time for them in that hot weather, but they pulled it off and everything really looks great. On opening day, our teachers took a good portion of the days to do committee work and plan their BaaS activities and they met with their grade level partners. We, as a staff, we got together and we made a kindness rock garden, which is now set up near the entrance of Cumberland Head. There's a sign outside that says, "There's only one you in the world, make it a better place." So the students really liked looking at those rocks as they waited and they are going to be creating their own to add to it. Our open house was held on September 4th and September 5th. Families were able to meet their teachers, tour the school, and look at the buses and find out cafeteria and busing information. We had the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, and the PTO all set up in the lobby recruiting new members. So we had a really great turnout and kids were excited to be there. It was above 90 degrees on that Tuesday, so I think it was a little quick. People weren't in and out very quickly. When students arrived on opening day, they were greeted with music and sidewalks were decorated with chalk. We had welcome back messages and we had all available teachers out front and center to assist our littlest ones to their classroom. First day, we had a little bit of a slow dismissal when we have four-year-olds and five-year-olds trying to find their busing. That was a little bit of a process, but the second day we got off much smoother thanks to our very patient bus drivers for bearing with us and helping us out. And in September, we have a number of great things to look forward to. The PTO is sponsoring the Eagle Palooza again. There's going to be face painting, obstacle courses and games, and a pancake breakfast. So that's on September 29th. Be looking for information about that. If anybody wants to come, you're all very welcome. Our PBIS committee is taking off our school-wide behavior training tomorrow where students will be taught the expectations in all areas of our school, including the buses. And we are working to incentivize positive behaviors. And one great idea that's coming from the committee is a bus rider of the week and we'll look to partner with our drivers to reward students for good behaviors and incentivize incentivize following rules on the school bus. So our Eagle Pride Committee is September 14th and we'll unroll that to all of our students. One last thing I want to mention. We have a student-run initiative. Fifth grader Kylie Bishop is kicking off Wands for Wildlife. She actually taught me something new I did not know this actually happened. But, Wands for Wildlife. Her poster says, "Did you know that some wildlife rescue organizations use cleaned mascara wands to clean tiny animals? So the mascara wands can help rescuers remove fly eggs and larvae from baby animals found in the wild." So she has put these around our building and she's going to be putting some in the high school. She's going to put some in the girls' high school locker room so that she can collect clean mascara wands and send them to a wildlife, Appalachian Wildlife Refuge. So if any of you have some donations to make, I can collect them. And Cameron, you'll be seeing these at the high school, so spread the word. But I wanted to bring that up because she's very excited about it and I'm very proud of her for taking the initiative. So we, as well at Cumberland Head, and everybody is excited for a new school year.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's nice to see everyone again. I hope you're all having a good time. To start the school year, one of my goals was to be out in the community and introduce myself to parents and students. And so we started off the school year with sixth grade orientation 2.0 in which it was a Meet the Principal night and coincided with the distribution of Chromebooks. And so our sixth graders came in, received their Chromebooks, was introduced to myself, and also received locks. And I had Stacy Bobby, Carrie Wood, and Scott Plutero here who also provided tours of the sixth grade hallway, which they volunteered to do. They weren't required to be here, so that was out of their own free will. Seventh and eighth graders also picked up Chromebooks prior to the start of the school year. Our plan for those Chromebooks that were undistributed was that they would be delivered to the homeroom teachers and that went really well. And our homeroom teachers distributed those to their students. And so we were able to start our STAR assessment within the second day of school, which was a reassessment. So we can benchmark our students and the interventionists can plan on who would be in their classroom. So that went really well, made for a smooth start. When the teachers arrived on superintendent's day, we did a team-building activity, Breakout EDU. And the purpose of this was for them to be introduced to the new staff that joined our team over the summer as well as work together. And also I could observe how they collaborate and the different personalities of their group to really help me inform how I would create teams in the upcoming school year. Following that, we did a vision casting activity in which we looked at the future and where we wanted to be in three years and then worked backwards from that. And that will really outline our PD for this year and our goals. Secondly, we talked about our buckets for that future casting, which was school climate and culture, community partnerships, instruction, student support, and curriculum. So where do we want to go within those buckets and therefore we can plan. We also had the second day, we had department meetings in which I was able to meet with each department and talk about where they see themselves and what they need from me in order to support their growth and their goals as a department. And what came out of that meeting is that they want to meet more. Who would have thought that? And so they really want to have the opportunity to collaborate so they can provide the best support for their students. We also met jointly with the high school for a safety team committee so that we're all on the same page considering there's two administrators in both buildings. So we just wanted to familiarize ourselves with the expectations and the procedure. Principal Johnson and I visited each class to introduce ourselves to the student and also reinforce expectations. Our teachers have been very busy since the beginning of the school year since students entered the building, doing team-building activities for project-based learning teams. We have a group going Thursday, or September 13th to Arbor Track in Vermont to help with that, with Team Summit. Team Ascent has done a lot of activities in which today Pauline Stone was able to attend 9/11 Day of Remembrance and Service where they had a panel of volunteers, EMS, Sheriff's Department, State Troopers, United Way, talking about how they volunteered and their passion for the community. We also decided that our theme for this year as a staff would be everything is possible. So all our staff announcements, our pride assemblies will all revolve around that theme for this year. And it goes along with our 10 Traits for Success, grit, perseverance, optimism, and so on and so forth. And so we're really on our way to having a great year and really honing in on our vision and what we want for our students and what they need for their success. Logistically, we only, we had a couple of changes due to the capital project for the large group instruction. Our tech room had to change locations, our art room had to change location. And so, but they have smoothly transitioned to those new spaces and there weren't very many hiccups in terms of locating those new spaces for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. I first want to thank Building and Grounds for having, you know, kids coming in. It was nice and clean and a great atmosphere for those kids right off the bat. That's great for those kids to come in. So I really appreciate you guys doing that and working hard over the summer. Kind of same note, I did have a community night. I had one with the teachers. I had one with the community as well, just so that they could get to know me. You know, get a feel for, you know, what my expectations are for the students, what my passion's about. Really build that community, build that culture around not only our students, but the community too as well. So we had, you know, a pretty decent turnout. Would like more always, but, you know, we're going to keep working on those. I'd like to have a few more with the community. It makes you definitely get our parents and our campus more often. Looking at that too, we had a freshman orientation. That was a great night. We tried something a little different this year. We did a rotation model. So the parents weren't really sitting there for a full hour and a half. We wanted them to kind of get up and move every 25 minutes because we'd bring over some other aspects for them to do. If it wasn't the Chromebook distribution, those expectations for the freshmen. So we had a lot of different things going on for them so they could actually get a feel for what was going on and not sitting in an auditorium for, you know, an hour and a half. Superintendent's days were very busy. You know, we set the expectations up. It was a great morning. Mr. Mannix with all the teachers in there. It was nice to see elementary through high school. I love that, that atmosphere and get everybody together. That's a nice feeling. That's a nice cultural climate that we have here on campus and something I wasn't used to because I'm used to nine through 12 on one building. So it was nice to have every teacher on our campus, you know, there strong and building that community base. Afternoon, we had a, I had faculty meetings. I did a rotational model once again. I really liked that rotation. Really met with the teachers, really set the kind of, the stage for high expectations. And that's really what I'm setting the stage for with my teachers, myself, and our students. It's really building that climate and culture of high expectations across our campus. And that was really that big discussion with my teachers is what's happening in conversation? How are we going to do this on a daily basis in your classroom? What's that look like? What's that look like for me? You know, I wanted to kind of get a feel from them of what they want, what are their leader, and what areas we could look at. And that's kind of my big goal right now is talking to a lot of people. That first two days of superintendent's days, that was my time to get those teachers on campus and talk to them. You know, and that was the big thing I got out of it is, you know, what's our expectation? How are we going to get there and build those goals and build that vision together? And those two days are highly productive. Second day, I did really the same type of thing. I met with, you know, our AIS teachers, really looking at our data this summer, looking at, you know, where can we improve there? How can we improve that? How are we monitoring our students? How are we using formal assessments, self-assessments to monitor students? And where can we go from there? How is that driving our instruction or AIS? I met with the leaders of our campus, with the leadership team of teachers, to really get them on board. You know, to kind of go over some of the things I need them to help me with. You know, with some of our positive behavior, our high expectations, our curriculum, and try to get, you know, build that rapport with them to get them on board to help us, you know, streamline this to the whole culture of our school. And that's what we need to do is I need them in the trenches every day to help me out, to get this stuff out. So we had a great meeting there for about an hour and a half. We discussed, you know, aspects of curriculum, the culture, the expectations all right across the board. And I thought that was a great, you know, great meeting to have with everybody. Ms. Nelson talked about the safety committee. I thought that was a great way to kind of bring it together, being two new principals. We had, you know, middle school and high school come together. We talked about, you know, even scenarios. You know, we had a scenario of if there was an explosion in the science room. What is everybody doing? What is your responsibility to do in that situation? And really come together in that moment to figure out, okay, what do we need to do? What's our responsibilities? So really talking safety, that was a great meeting. We were in there for about an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes, really just talking safety. How to make sure our kids are safe on this campus and make sure our protocols are in place to do that on a daily basis. Then we had a PBIS meeting. I'm huge on positive behavior. I am rolling out quite a few different types of incentives for our students. We have Eagle Box, we have positive referrals. And I wanted to get that out to the students. I want to reward our students for doing the right thing. I want to build a culture of family, brotherhood, and sisterhood on our campus and reward positive behavior. So we had a meeting there with a team. We had a team of about eight already, which is awesome. Trying to get that, to build that up. But at the same time, it's getting that information out to our students. We had the first day of school. We had our teachers meet the students coming off the bus. That was great with some music playing. So it was nice to kind of get that rapport, the students coming in. That second day, I grade level assemblies. I met with every grade level, nine through 12. Talked about expectations, talked about high expectations for themselves, motivation for themselves, building a culture, building that community. I talked to them about the brotherhood, taking care of each other. And that's half the battle. If we can take care of each other and be a family, we're going to be a lot better off in this process. Friday, we had our barbecue and our moving up ceremony, which was great. It was really fun to kind of have that day. You know, the activities out in the football field, you know, some games out there. Then we came inside the gymnasium and we had the moving up ceremony. What I really loved about the moving up ceremony, everybody was there for each other. You know, the kids, you know, our seniors even stood up for our freshmen and clapped for them when they, when they. And that's the atmosphere I wanted. And that's, that's the kind of the culture I want to bring here. It's really having that family-oriented structure and definitely, I saw that on class Friday. I wanted, you know, mold that and continue that. And then just kind of this week, you know, had department meetings already, had a meeting yesterday with the LA. I'm meeting with social studies next week and math next week. Really get the idea of the curriculum, looking at the region scores, breaking down those region scores, really figuring out where we need to go from here. You know, and asking ourselves, okay, what's going to drive our instruction? What do we need to improve? And really set that goal with my teachers and say, okay, we have a 5% goal. We're going to increase our regis in every year by 5%, how are we going to do that? So really having those conversations with them and changing that, you know, that thought process of the curriculum and really having that data drive the instruction. I had a leadership meeting with the students on Thursday, so it'll be interesting. I'd love to have that, you know, kind of get their view on everything and see how everything's going the first couple of days because I have made a few changes in policy. But I think the policy changes that we've made have gone really well so far, keeping kids in class, maximizing our instructional time, and that's the biggest thing. Have our kids in class, learning, having community. So this week's been, you know, very busy kickoff, but at the same time, we're getting a lot done. We're building that community, we're building that high expectation, and we're, we're rolling. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the title of my essay is, "What Did We Do This Summer?" This summer was a culmination of a lot of projects that we spent most of last year planning for. And the first one kicked off with the deployment of a 300 telephone phone system to replace the eight-year-old system that we had on site before. And, you know, a lot of what I'm going to say has been mentioned in parts, but, you know, I'm not going to steal their thunder. I've got to give you more detail about ours. The phones, why do we do it? Well, first of all, because we could, we had the ability within the budget to do it. But it was also more cost-effective than what we were doing before. Our bills with West Telcom are going to be cheaper than what we were paying before with PrimeLink. We also introduced a host of new features for our staff to give them more flexibility in how they handle communications. So speaking of communications and infrastructure, we also installed over 90 wireless access points. And that doesn't necessarily sound super exciting unless you were in a classroom that didn't have one before. So I can tell you at this point, every single classroom in our district, every single one in all buildings have a wireless access point so that all students within the classroom that have devices can connect equally on the same wavelength. And that also, adding to that, are common areas such as lobbies, freeways. Those are also serviced now where they, we didn't have the ability to do that before. Partnering with West Telcom, this is a pretty exciting one, but you wouldn't know about it unless you saw the process. So we, we have partnered with West Telcom to have fiber optic cabling between this main campus and Cumberland Head. But in between there, we're also hitting the bus garage and the driver simulator. That provides, Mr. Chauvin can tell you, over the years, he's had a point-to-point wireless that has worked okay until we started adding students at the bus garage with a lot of more bandwidth issues. So now on fiber, I don't think we're having those issues any longer and we probably never will. But what that fiber will do for us is it will also provide a pathway not only for our new voice services, but it will also provide a redundant pathway for internet services. So unless there's someone that knows something I don't in this room, there's no one north of Albany that has or will have a redundant internet connection as a school district. And we will have that. So that when we have any sort of outage, we'll automatically be able to switch over to the secondary connection so the instruction that relies heavily on digital media can continue without interruption. So that, that giving us a measure of security that we certainly don't have now. So speaking of security, it's been mentioned a couple of times, but last year, the district invested a good amount of money in a brand-new network-based surveillance system replacing the 120 cameras that we previously had. The district recommitted through, much of it through advisement of the safety committee. And we added an additional 60-plus cameras to what we already had installed last year. But in addition to that, it's not just about the monitoring, it's also how we react to emergency situations. And it's been mentioned about the strobes, but the multicolored strobes also reflect the threat levels that we respond to, the shelter in place, the evacuation, the lockdown, the hold in place. So the lights that are on the strobes that are strategically placed throughout the main building and Cumberland Head campuses will both give an audible tone when there is an emergency as well as a visual indicating the threat level that we're currently at. Again, helping people to keep their cool and reinforce what they should be doing in an event of emergency. And those are also tied to lockdown buttons, which would be in the offices so that instead of in an emergency situation having to coordinate multiple different activities at the same time, the single lockdown buttons will allow to trigger those different events. Notifications on PA, notifications to staff, the locking out of proximity card access, et cetera. Not the last of it, but we're also, we have new door intercoms with high-def video so that people can actually be seen, you know, who's trying to get into our building as well as giving staff in the offices flexibility of how they let people in, whether it's through a buzzer, through their phone, through an app on their smartphone. And lastly, although our work is truly just beginning now with students coming back, I do want to highlight the Chromebook rollout that we did this year. I would say it's the smoothest that we've had in the four years we've been doing it. Although our participation was just a little bit less than 50% for students and parents coming back, the process itself was smooth. We can offer these nights, we can't always, you know, plan what's best for everybody. But we had volunteers from SUNY. We had some instructional staff who stepped up and volunteered as well. The BEAC squad was out in force assisting us. My own family came out to help as well. But I do want to thank Principal Nelson and Principal Pizai for working with our department to help make that process of distribution even more smooth for the staff and students. This is the first year, as they mentioned, that we actually took those remaining Chromebooks and rolled them out in homerooms. And it's kind of a test bed for us to see how things went. And there was very, very, very little negative feedback at all that came back to us. And students were very happy that they had their devices sooner. And since it worked so well, we're planning on doing that exclusively for next year. So they got a taste of it this year and now, you know, now we know what's to come. And it was also the first year that we've had our replacement cycle for all students in grades three, six, and nine for our Chromebooks. That's huge. It's hard to believe that it was five years ago. We were just planning how we were going to do it and now we're actually talking about replacement. So I want to thank the Board for its continued support, you know, for these initiatives and for giving enhanced learning opportunities for our students. So excited for the year to come.
Carrie, just want to add one thing.
Sure.
We met with one of the officers, one of the troopers from the New York State Police.
Yes, 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 yes. Just want to add on. Absolutely, yes. So Trooper Parent met with the superintendent and I. They are instituting around the region actually, a program where the ID badges that the troopers carry are also proximity cards. So they would, they give them access to their state police barracks and so forth. They're providing districts around the region information about these cards so that they can coordinate access to buildings. So if there's an emergency situation, we don't have to scramble to issue cards to let them into a building in an emergency. They already are pre-authorized to enter the building so that they don't have to go back to their barracks to get a card. They don't have to go back to a certain squad card. They all will have them. And we just got that information, all of the full information today. And we'll be one of the first three or four school districts to allow that to happen. So again, keeping our building safe when an emergency happens. So thank you for your time.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Ryan, I was just answering a question in regards to the officers. Does that allow access to any law enforcement officer?
It's, right now, the list we received were state troopers, exclusively state troopers. It was not, the list that we got was only from the New York State Troopers. It wasn't from the local Sheriff's Department or anything like that. But this partnership initially was just that.
And we know if any of those officers are under investigation or have any complaints and they're being addressed?
I'm sorry.
So there was a concern a few years ago that a law enforcement officer might have been a threat to the district. Would that be a blanket authorization to every law enforcement officer? Would I take that into consideration?
We received a specific listing of all, of all the people that are authorized and can remove, deactivate, activate as the district. If there's a concern, we can activate or deactivate as necessary. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Moving on to reports, the first report is Superintendent of School, Stan Uman.
So we had a supervisor's report here. They've been waiting around for a while now.
Just so you guys know, I don't have a list.
Okay. Let's start with Roxy.
Sorry, Roxy.
Our school year started off with the orientations. I love going to the orientations. It's interesting to see who's bringing who in the north, who's the leader, the parent or the child, and shedding the tears. So it's a, it's a good way to start the school year. Over the summer, we also have a meeting for the cafeteria staff. We're mandated to have a certain amount of educational hours for the school year. So, through the county health department and our local school table association, which is made up of all the local school food service directors in Platte County, we organize a meeting in the summer, it's an eight-hour meeting, everybody gets their hours in that day. Topics that were discussed this year were nutrition, the right to know, the county does the sanitation code, and any updates with that. This year, we were fortunate enough to have the education, New York State Education Department come up and give us their updates, that was a great addition to our meeting. Farm school program, and we always end with cheer yoga, which I think is a great way to end, because it left everybody with a smile. As the instructor tells everybody to go to the left, half go to the left, half go to the right, they bump into each other, it's kind of, it's a nice way to end a meeting. Seventeen staff members went from this district. We started off, when we first started this three years ago, we had 40 people come. This year, we had over 150 from the three counties. So each year, we're growing, at this point, we're growing out of the room that we use. So it's a cool way to get that all over with. Our total meals from last year, if you add breakfast, lunch, and the snack, was 918,000. We started our snack a little late in mid-October. We've already started in the elementaries and the middle school, and we're hoping to start in the high school on Friday. Our setups are pretty much the same, we have kiosks out in the hallways for breakfast for middle schools, middle school and elementary, and the high school line is open for middle school and high school for fourth period. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just have one word of thanks for you. My kid went to the jump camp, I appreciate you guys doing that, that was nice.
Mary has the summer program.
Oh, did?
On that, but.
That was nice.
We took our meals on the road this summer.
You did, and it was noticed and appreciated.
I drove the van down there one time, and it was interesting. Everybody loved seeing me when I got on that van.
Hello, everyone. We had an excellent, I believe, opening as far as they go. A little bit of a bump over coming up ahead for a little bit, but that's typical of trying to get little ones to go where they're supposed to go, and make sure we're doing that without getting any big loss, that's not what we aim to do. I feel, it feels like summer school blended into the start of the school year, we don't really end around here anymore. We have buses running pretty much year-round. But that being said, we received delivery of our gas buses over the summer, those things are really working out well, in my opinion, as far as the cost of operation goes, we're initially saving 10,000 vehicle on the purchase, and then it just gets better as it goes. They already meet EPA standards, so we're not having to deal with that, they're clean burning. To me, it's a good way to go, we have nine now in-house, and soon to have the fuel tank onsite will be a great relief there, too. It's been pretty much all positive as far as the move from gas, from these two gas. And we're looking forward to a great year.
Building grounds operation, as a court mentioned, but we're doing it near our 15th year. The buildings got brought together really quick, a lot of times, we'd come in during the summer, you're looking around, you figure now, how can they do this, they're not gonna meet the deadline. We've got a lot of good people out there working, working because nobody's got hot humid days, and I felt bad for them, I kind of walked by my office, and the air conditioner was running, because I shut the door. No, we did a big job this year, advanced those difficult seals for it, so it kind of slowed us down a little bit there. We got brought together there, as far as the maintenance crew, they did a number of small projects around the school office, it's a stairwells and whatnot, maintained ball fields, a lot of mullin early in the season. Then dried out towards the end, slowed us down in the fields, which we didn't mind that inside. We did a lot of preventive maintenance, we did change all the air filters, pulleys, belts on all the air handlers, PREs. We're also looking at, looking at and excited about the conditioning of the new high-efficiency propane boilers, which is gonna happen in the next week or so. And also, we'll be working with the energy management system, so I'm expecting that things will go quite smoothly. The energy performance project is here in the end, there's still a little bit of work here and there to complete, as you see, myself and Josh Mullin have been working with the superintendent and his staff team as far as over, overview on that project, as well as the capital project. Completely impressed with the work that was done in part for the timeframe that was allotted, and I credit that a lot to the superintendent, his overview of that project in particular, I was involved in those meetings, and I thought, figured, say, are you sure you can do this? Well, they got done, and I'm really happy with it.
I'd just like to say one thing, excellent job on the gymnasium.
Yes.
That looks outstanding.
Yes, it was. I was amazed that that went through.
Looks really nice.
And I'd like to invite Assistant Superintendent Polly Tavernier to wrap up our reports.
Okay.
Or presentations, sorry.
Quickly, the principal, the Polly Department's did a great job with a successful opening to school for all of our students. As far as the special education department, we've been busy getting our new staff, we've had new teachers, related service providers, aides, come in and getting them ready. We were able to do therapeutic crisis intervention updates for both bus drivers and monitors and teacher aides at the first day of school, superintendent's day. In addition to that, we've had 28 new students transfer in with disabilities that we've been very busy getting, making sure that they have appropriate program services, devices, and making sure they're all set for the start of the school year. And we're in the process of interviewing and hiring for 548 physicians, so it's been a busy start, but everything's gone really well.
Thank you very much.
I've been on the board for a little over 10 years, and I think this year is the first year I've seen with the new administrators such excitement, looking forward to the new school year. Thank you very much for it.
Moving on, we were going to reports, starting with Superintendent of Schools, Daniel Lance.
Thanks, so hopefully this is working. Is it working? You have to have a close word to work.
Okay, there we go. So, thanks. So Polly, or Pauline, excuse me, stole my thunder, because I absolutely agree that I haven't seen, I've always loved opening a school, it's the day before, it's still Christmas Eve, and then everybody shows up. But there is, there was a real, true excitement that's been greater than the other day, than the other day. So, that's, I don't know why, but I can't tell you how proud I am, it starts with the buildings and grounds looking so good, then the buses start rolling, the kids start coming in, we feed them breakfast, we start to do that smooth, and then you folks have everybody ready to go, and everybody's lined up and ready to start moving forward with your vision of what you want in your building. And I walked into the high school day two, and I couldn't believe how many kids weren't in the hallway, you know? And then today, I was in the auditorium, and I know Board Member Stone was in the auditorium, and to see the project-based team already up and moving forward, and I know that at the elementary schools, staff seem to be participating in higher levels on committees, and there's been a lot of excitement, I popped into a couple, and made fun of my green jacket, we said it must be because we have the money for this sort of office. Anyways, it's really been awesome to start this year, especially with so many new folks, so kudos to you guys for getting this off to a great, great start, so thank you.
Mr. Ryan, how many new administrators do we have this year?
So, I've seen two new administrators this year.
All right, moving on. Next, a report is with School Business Executive, Mary Wavely-Good.
Hi, so I'll jump right in, following up on cafeteria activities for the summer, the summer food service program, we did continue this year, it was relocated to the Cumberland Head campus, because we were anticipating the capital project was locating us from here. We served 7,060 meals, that was 1,500, just under 1,600 breakfast, and just under 5,500 lunches during the summer over a seven-week period of time. And as Mrs. Barnes had indicated, we had Meals on Wheels, we actually had the school van and delivered them to the various camps that also historically had taken place on our campus, but due to the project, were taking place in other areas, so we brought the meals to where the students were. And it was wonderful. It's been a project that the community also benefits from, because at those, at the facility, the campus, some individuals do come in that aren't part of the large groups off the campuses. The other item that I wanted to give an update on is we had just compiled the tax cert claims that we have received, I'll be bringing that to the next board meeting as an agenda item. We have just over $700,000 worth of claims, we reported that out today to our external auditors, and that will be just noted as a disclosure item for our external audit report. And the last item, I wanted to just give you all a heads up, that I will be stalking you at the end of the meeting, because I have the updated tax warrants that I need to get your signatures on. We have the star breakout following the school tax, following the school tax bills that were generated, so I'll just walk around and get each of you to sign off on that, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Next is ex-officio student board member Cameron Pucher.
So, all I really have left to explain is how school has been running in terms, or the eyes of a student. So as observed, school has been running quite smoothly in the high school, which is quite good, considering all the new changes that have been instituted. And right now, we have 12 seniors who are attending new visions, I believe it's 12, and that's a really rigorous program, considering last year, we didn't have any students attending, it's really good that we have 12. Welcoming the freshmen was a tremendous success. I am one of the mates, revisers of the peer connecting groups that help orientate the freshmen on their second day of school, and it was all running really smoothly, I'm glad to see they all had fun, and it's fairly very important that they start high school with the right mindset, along with like a really good welcoming ceremony at the end of that Thursday, or Friday, whatever day it was. And the student parking, we are relocated for the temporary beginning of school, and I haven't seen any issues, honestly, it's been working really well, and we all can't wait to try out a new parking lot.
All right, thank you very much, Cameron. Next, our committee reports, there are none at this time. It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion, please? Pauline, second. Shannon. Any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and 504 recommendations dated 9/11/2018. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Shannon, second. Mark, second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Noes, abstains, resolution passes. Next is personnel, resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, and retirements be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please? Motion? Okay, we need to say a lot of numbers.
Sorry.
Joanne here. All right. Second? Edmar? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Noes?
I vote no.
All right. Did you vote no? Okay, good. Abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the following building-level emergency response plans for the 2018-2019 school year. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, second.
Do you have any questions or discussion? All in favor? Noes, abstains, resolution passes. It's resolved, the Superintendent of Schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolution on this consent agenda, grants, be and are hereby approved. This is a roll call vote, but could we start with a motion? Did you get that, Joanne?
Sorry.
Second.
Mark, seconds. Any question or discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Douglas Stevie?
Yes.
Andy Rockway?
Yes.
Kathy Buckley?
Yes.
Shannon Drown?
Yes.
Michael Agadorne?
Yes.
Edmarin?
Yes.
Mark Sam?
Yes.
Alliance John?
Yes.
All right, additional items to discuss. We've scheduled a board retreat for October 16th at 5:30. Did we determine a location?
So we're still working on the location, some of the places haven't gotten back, there was a lead for another place, so we're open to suggestions. It was suggested that we find a new location, we're working on it, but it's easy to do. Thank you.
All right, so if anybody has any suggestions, please send them into Joanne, and we'll work our way through them. The next is the NISBA 99th Annual Convention and Education Expo. It is in New York City between October 25th and October 27th. If anyone would like to attend, I've actually attended one town we've gone. They're very informative, it's nice to be exposed to new information, other districts, new perspectives, so if you're interested in attending, please contact Joanne, and she will, um, sign you up for the conference. Also, the CEWW School Boards Association meeting is November 15th, 2018, "Supporting Students' Mental Health by Partnering with Community Agencies," is their topic. Do you know, is this one that has a dinner, or is this not?
I don't think they have dinners anymore, I think they're sponsored by law firms, and they have, it's not that, well, I'll take that back, I think actually, they might be moving, they might be moving back to dinners, they are moving back to dinners, because people from the farther reaches of our posies, traveling a long time, you know, a few meatballs was, it's a hard night.
Do you know where it's located?
This is, it's so, I believe it's West Side Borough.
It's historically located.
Yes, West Side Borough, and I believe they're going back to the actual first time in the world.
And once again, if you're interested in attending, please contact Joanne, and she will schedule it. Next, we have public comment, we've set aside.
I have several ones I'd like to discuss, under additional items to discuss. First of all, I wanted to ask why Don Gerhardt is here, and who asked him to be here, because there's no board approval. I believe Mr. Gerhardt charges the taxpayers $200 an hour to be here, and we receive no explanation as to why he's here, or a member from his firm is here at almost every meeting. Second question, I passed concerns to the board president earlier at this meeting, and she refused to take a copy, I have several concerns related to the work environment at the district, and she refused to take a copy. work environment at the district and she refused to take a copy from me. And I'd also like to ask who on the board initiated an investigation with a firm that recent, well, ten years ago had to pay back a million dollars for pension abuses. Considered their attorneys public sector employees and defrauded the state pension system. I've also posted my interview with the investigator on board portal, so I believe that is foilable by the press Republican who I believe is here tonight. And I also am willing, I redacted all confidential information and student information and since Ms. Buckley does not want to take a copy of my concerns, I plan on turning it over to the press Republican tonight.
Andy, you walked up and you handed me a pack of paper and it sounded like you said, here's my report.
That's not what I said. Do you know, do you want a copy now?
I, I'm actually really not sure if I want the copy or not. We can talk about it after, but I thought you said, here's my report, so.
Well, as you know, I've been recording people, so I recorded what your response was if you'd like to hear it later.
Okay. If you recorded it, that's fine. That's your prerogative. You're legally have the right to do that. I'm not really sure why you felt it necessary.
Because you're now denying that you didn't refuse a copy.
No, I'm not decide, I did not say I refuse to accept the copy. I thought you said it was your report.
Do you want a copy of the concerns that I have?
Leave it here and I will decide whether I'm going to read it or not.
Okay, I'd ask the press to follow up to see if Kathy did take a copy of it.
Okay. Alright, so question one.
Who decided to start an investigation into-
Actually, it was Doug.
The investigator told me that Mr. Gerhardt had no part of it and I believe that's on audio recording as well, so it's now Doug's position that he did recommend.
Is there meetings leading up to today? Why is your first call? That's your first call?
Doug Gerhardt is, was invited here to make sure that we operate within the legal bounds of our responsibilities of the school district and the superintendent's contract when we were discussing his evaluation.
Have we typically done that in years past?
We haven't always needed to.
Why do we need to now?
Because I feel that we need to be accurate with Mr. Mannix's contract and how we discuss topics concerning it.
So his contract is being discussed tonight, so do you expect Mr. Gerhardt to be here regularly in the future?
If we feel that we need his advice to make sure the Beattentown Central School District's Board of Education operates within the legal boundaries of its responsibilities, yes.
Do you plan on clearing that with the board before you make that decision unilaterally or in conjunction with the superintendent or the vice president since it's since it's costing the taxpayers probably tens of thousands of dollars?
As board leadership, I feel it is essential at this time that we function within the legal boundaries of our responsibilities. If it is in question or someone, I have interpreted as feeling that we may not be, I would like legal representation here to make sure we function within our legal responsibilities of the district.
So do you have several concerns that we're not operating within the legal bounds of the district?
I want to make sure that we are because if we're not, it is not appropriate for the Board of Education. So having a legal representative of, for our district to refer to is appropriate and it has been done in the past.
Has, is Mr. Gerhardt able to appear telephonically so he doesn't have to drive or does he charge for drive time to and from Saratoga?
I charge the district in accordance with our engagement agreement and just for the board's information, my colleagues and I, when we attend board meetings, which is routine all across the state, we never have a board act to approve us attending. It's a part and parcel of the engagement of law firms as council to the board when we're asked to attend to attend. So the, the, your question about whether the board acted to ask me or one of my colleagues to appear here, that, that isn't actually what is required.
So you didn't answer my question. Since we're expending taxpayer dollars, are you charging to drive to and from Saratoga, which is an hour and a half drive? Three hours times two hundred dollars is six hundred dollars an hour, or six hundred dollars a month. Are you charging to drive to and from Saratoga?
I have totally inappropriate and wasted taxpayer dollars and you could call my opinion.
So my next question is who decided to engage Gervin and Perlazo to investigate my so-called conduct? And I've researched these investigations before and they can cost up to sixty to seventy thousand dollars. I believe Ms. Buckley has stated on several occasions that she's frugal. Who decided without the action of the board to hire this individual and conducted investigation into my so-called behavior, which again, I posted my interview on the board portal and I'd be more than happy to share it with anyone who's interested to see what kind of questions they were asking me in regards to my whole, whole behavior.
Well, actually, as of right now, being that the investigation has not concluded and we do not have a report, I really don't think it's appropriate to discuss it publicly.
But you put it in, well, you put it in an email, which is foilable, so you discussed it in public. So I believe that it is appropriate since you put it in an email that you started an investigation.
I would, just for the board's purposes, I would suggest that the matter that's being discussed be held off, held in advance because it is ongoing and not complete. So that would be my advice to you with respect to that. If you choose not to take it, that certainly the board, any individual might as well, I don't, I don't think it's a proven course of action to be discussing something that's whether it be litigation or an, or, or an investigation.
So I think as a course of principle for an institution to operate, anytime there is any concern of any board member or any, just like when there are students that have concerns or teachers that have concerns, there should be a mechanism to evaluate concerns for, you know, managing and operating institution correctly. Likewise, in the protection, I think for all board members, if there are concerns that are brought up by board members, I think that it's, the onus is on us to take a look at them. If someone has a concern, then whether it's you or anybody else, I think we have to address them. How we address them is also important. I think we need to follow procedure or process. And they're, I think they're all important. You've raised good questions. A lot of other board members have raised good questions and I think they all need to be heard.
With these, okay.
The dangerous part comes when we start talking about emotional perspectives or ideas or thoughts that we think things are happening. In order to protect fact conviction, then, then it's important to start bringing in independent people to try to understand the root in where these things are happening. So it does two things. One of them is it starts asking the questions of other board members who have the concerns, so you can listen to their board with their concerns. And even the people who may be accused, they might then now have a voice and a place to legally present their, their position. So, so it not only, it not only protects the board members that have concerns, and it also, in your case, also allows you a place to voice on paper your concerns as well, so it's not just about that. Okay, so, so I think operating as an institution, just like when a parent comes to us and says, I have this problem, the first thing that we do is we send them to the chain of command, follow policy, procedure, and putting the information so that something can be done about it. I think that as a board, we should try to do the same thing and follow some sort of a process that allows it to be factual and, and open. At least that's the intent.
No, I agree with you Ed and I spoke, when I spoke to the investigator and I believe that I can say what I spoke about because he consented to me tape recording that as well. So it's not technically, he also said that he doesn't have any attorney client privilege with the board. It's with Gervin and Perlazo, so I don't believe that he's getting confidential information. He stated that his charge was to investigate meaningful removal as a board member and when I brought several concerns related to the performance of the superintendent, he said that would provide context, but he was not there to investigate that. So to your point Ed, if I'm raising concerns and I think they're serious enough, that creates a problem. Why are we not investigating those with an investigator as well?
I think that concerns that you have should be brought up and we should, we should address them and look at them.
Should we hire an investigator?
Well, that's, that's something for us to, to look at the possibility.
I make a motion to hire an investigator to investigate the actions that I brought up to the board. That I believe affects the work environment of Beattentown Central School and has caused several administrators to leave. If it takes me having to resign my board by releasing all the information I have, I, I will. I'll sacrifice myself for the school district.
Move to go into executive session.
To continue on with this or to have an executive session?
I don't believe in this executive session information.
The question, the, the problem is that, is that we can choose to start addressing now or move to gather information to talk about it at the next meeting. We already have, now that it's not valid, because valid, we have a pretty full agenda where we have to go into executive session as well. Maybe that's something to discuss. If we're talking about the superintendent's contract, I don't know that it's in place to do so.
I don't believe it is and I have one last standing question too. I sent an email to board leadership and superintendent of meetings asking for several, or two separate agenda items to be added to the agenda in more than five days in advance to the agenda coming out. I'd like to know why those were not added to the agenda. I can't discuss them because they would be executive session information, but I'd like an answer as to why those two items weren't added to the agenda.
Andy, we are talking about one of your subject matters, we believe, in executive session tonight. The other one, I think when we get a little bit more clarification and understanding of the issue, then we can definitely add it to meetings in the future, but we really do have a very long meeting tonight.
No, that's fine. I just was asking why I have a long meeting.
Okay. Moving from additional items unless anyone else has something to add. Okay. Public comment. We've set aside an additional ten minutes for public comment. If anyone would like to approach the board at this time, please come forward. Seeing that we have no one coming forward, we will be going into our next resolution. Alright, we need to determine a quirk pro temp for our executive session. May someone please nominate a quirk pro temp? Holly, would you, we are quirk pro temp tonight? So we have a motion as me being quirk pro temp, may we have a second? So Ed is our second. Any questions or discussions? All in favor? Nays, abstains, resolution passes?
I'm opposed to that request.
I am going to have to say if the superintendent feels that legal advice needs to be had, I think it's appropriate to invite Doug Gerhardt into our executive session at this time. Is it possible to take a few minutes and recess so much?
I believe we have to go and whether or not we're waiting somebody into executive session is not going to work since this is
Is there a particular reason you don't want him here?
Because I think that we're capable of making decisions and we have been for years and Mr. Mannix says that he needs a personal attorney in the room and I don't think that we need to have an attorney that only answers to a couple of people when he's asked questions.
I am counsel to the Board of Education. My engagement letter with, with, between my firm and the board, as you know, states that I'm counsel to the board. It's inaccurate to say I'm Mr. Mannix's personal attorney. That's not true. I'm your attorney. If you'd like me in executive session in case you think a legal issue might come up, I'm happy to join you in executive session. It's fairly standard procedure to have me attend executive session. I've never had a board make a motion and second and approve the attorney going into executive session with board members thinking it'd be helpful for me to be there in case a legal matter arises. I'd happen to be there. If you want to make a motion and second it, procedurally, I can't, I don't think that there's anything that, that says you can't do that, but I guess I would tell you that I would be happy.
I will reiterate that if the superintendent of our district feels that legal representation should be in our executive session, then we invite Doug Gerhardt into our executive session at this time.
I personally think that has nothing to do with the superintendent, no offense.
No, but please just say.
But I would appreciate you to be here.
Thank you. Alright. My mouth is so dry, I can barely talk at this point. Alright, so let's see. Where is our resolution on our executive session?
Bottom of the ten page.
Page nine of ten.
Alright, so we did our quirk pro temp. Yeah, we've done this. Oh, it's eleven of one. Alright, it's resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment of a particular person. May I have a motion?
And, and the phrase is right, as I've heard. There's also a discussion on a particular You want to identify which of these bulleted items you're going in on, not just all of them?
My question is, is this going to be expanded beyond the appointment of a particular person then?
Yes, this is going to be about the appointment of a particular person. This will be about precise.
Because then we need to motion to amend the resolution.
Employment history of a particular person.
Also, so it doesn't change that. It leads to the appointment of a particular person.
Alright, so.
And, and the, in a separate discussion on the employment history of a particular person.
Okay, so I, I move, I move to add to the resolution at the end of this. to the resolution at the end of this, and the employment history of a particular person.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
All, any questions or discussion? All in favor? Nays? Abstains? Modification of resolution passes?
Yes. Do we intend on taking any action after executive session?
Now we're still not, need to vote on the resolution.
Oh.
Let's just see, David. Now you got to read the whole thing before you...
It's resolved that the Board of Education enters into executive session to discuss matters leading to the appointment of a particular person and a separate employment history of personnel?
A particular person.
A particular person.
Motion.
I'm sorry. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution, nays? Abstains? Resolution passes? All right.
Do we intend on taking any action after executive session?
Hold on, let me get ahead of you. We may or we not, all we do. After our executive session, we do intend on...
Taking action.
Taking action. Concerning our executive session. There we go. All right. So we are going to take a three-minute break. So I can get something to drink. It is resolved that the Board of Education appoint Nicholas Pepe in a four-year probationary appointment effective nine twelve two thousand eighteen and ending on nine eleven two thousand twenty-two as a twelve-month Director of Pupil Personnel and Services in the tenure area of direct, Director of Pupil Personnel and Services at a salary of eighty-two thousand for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen fiscal year. Mr. Pepe holds School District Leadership Professional Certification. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Pauline. Do we have any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Nays? Abstains? Okay. Mark and Andy. All right, resolution passes. It's resolved that the Board of Education, that the meeting be adjourned.
You're going to do the board here. Are you going to have the year on?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mannix. All right. It is resolved that the Board of Education... How do we want to say that? Increase?
Can you craft the resolution?
Extend the superintendent's contract for one additional year for a total term of five years. Ending... I don't know your, which, which, it's an August...
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, but what's, it's like August twenty...
It's like twenty-second, isn't it?
Do we have to be that specific? We just extend the year for an extra year?
We'll make sure the amendment specifically addresses the exact date, but it'll be the year twenty twenty-three. And it's an August date. I just don't want to misdate. I believe it's the twenty-second, so we'll, we'll make sure it's correct. I guess I would also add to that to also authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute an amendment consistent with this resolution.
Okay. I need a proofread. Please help me. It's resolved that the Board of Education extend the superintendent's contract one year for a total of five years, ending August, I believe is twenty-second two thou, two thousand twenty-three.
And to further authorize the Board President to execute an amendment, contract amendment. Consistent with this resolution. So that way the board doesn't have to read out it to the capital of the session.
Authorize this resolution to be consistent with the superintendent's contract?
Consistent with the...
Consistent with that?
Consistent with this resolution.
Okay.
And I'll draft something here when it goes. It probably won't be too late.
All right. All right. It's, it is resolved that the super, I'm sorry, the Board of Education extend the superintendent's contract one year for a total of five years, ending in August twenty-second two thousand twenty-three and authorizing the school board president to amend this resolution to be consistent with this resolution?
And the contract.
Yeah, that's what I thought. This contract.
To amend the contract to be consistent with this resolution.
Oh, my gosh.
I think you take a motion.
Thank you. Contract. Okay, we'll, we'll write it nice for Joanne. All right. Mike, please have a motion. Motion? All right. Second, please? Ed? All right, so I have it as Doug is the motion. Ed is the second. Any discussion or questions? No, because that is, that's pre-existing. Any other questions or discussion?
I honestly, I just couldn't hear Andy. Andy couldn't hear you.
I just could, I was confused in the financial part that we discussed, so I didn't know if that needed to be part of the resolution.
No. I don't know. I wasn't there, but...
But my understanding was that you were, the raise that was in effect is in effect and the raise for the future and subsequent years are going to be determined there?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays? All right, hold on. Abstains? Resolution passes?
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's resolved that this, the Board of Education, that the meeting be adjourned. Wait, now what?
We had talked about an interim.
No, that was Nick. So Mike still holds that position.
Oh, that's right, yeah, Mike.
We're all really tired, I think, at this point. All right, we're going to try this again. It's resolved that the Board of Education, that this meeting be adjourned. Mark, was that you that second? Questions? Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Nays? Abstains? Resolution passes. Everyone have a safe drive home and good night. All right, what time is it?